Good morning. It's nine thirty and time to call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting for August 5th. We will begin as is customary by observing a minimum of silence. Thank you. Please rise for the pleasure to play.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now is the time for public comment. Is anyone that would like to speak at this point? Not who? If not, we will go to the agenda and look for approval of our previous meeting's minutes.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve the meeting minutes of July fifteenth. Any question, comment, or any additions, deletions, or corrections?
I do have a few minor things for Dawn, but nothing that's substantial, but I know she likes to be a perfectionist. I'll handle those other two.
Does that mean we should approve the minutes or not?
I would, yeah, approve them, subject to that.
We don't know what is occurring. We don't know if they're accurate, subject to whatever.
Let's ask if, Dawn, you feel?
What's the name? I had aims and aims instead of aims and what's.
You can't make it second the motion, in other words.
The other was a capitalization.
It's just a little thing.
But I just want to make sure that we're correcting.
Right, with the corrections that are stated.
Yes.
Those are the three?
Yeah.
It's moved and seconded and we have agreed that the corrections, Dawn, isn't that are accurate? In favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so we'll move on to our treasurer's report. Just identify yourself in your office and then we can proceed.
Tina Fias, Deputy Treasurer from the Treasurer's Office, going for salary today. We start with a cash balance of one million eight hundred sixty-seven thousand four hundred forty-nine dollars, sixty-seven cents. Our receipts for the third and the fourth were one million one hundred sixteen thousand nine hundred fifty-six dollars, fifty-eight cents, which brought our balance to two million nine hundred eighty-four thousand four hundred six dollars and twenty-five cents. Thus, our expenditures of two million two hundred forty-three thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars, ninety-seven cents, and subtracting the tax claim balance, thirty-nine thousand two hundred thirty-nine dollars and five cents, which brought us to a cash balance of seven hundred one thousand four hundred and one dollar and twenty-three cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report as presented.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve the treasurer's report as presented. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved. Make it, Tina. Good morning.
Morning, ladies. Michelle Eders, Director of Human Resources. And Cheryl Swigler, Director of Human Resources. Resignations and terminations. Christine Wolf, Adel, Abuse Investigator from Area Agency Aging. Resignation effective August eighteenth. Monica Greif, Secretary B from the District Attorney's Office. Resignation effective July sixteenth. Jeremy Lefler, Deputy Director of Nineway One from the Department of Emergency Services. Resignation effective August thirteenth. Olivia Torado, Team Clerk from Domestic Relations. Resignation effective August thirteenth. Atari Felton, Full-Time Correctional Officer from the Jail. Resignation effective July twenty-sixth. Nicholas Anderson, Full-Time Correctional Officer. Removal effective July sixteenth. Lilian Mau, Full-Time Correctional Officer from the Jail. Job abandonment effective July ten. Joshua Vai, Full-Time Correctional Officer from the Jail. Removal effective August thirteenth. Nicole Lavak, EJ Clerk from former MPJ fellows' office. Resignation effective August thirteenth. And Valley Surr, Full-Time Deputy Sheriff from the Sheriff's Office. Resignation effective July sixth. I'll move it.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve those resignations and removals. Any question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
Under leaves of absence, Donald Yorie from the Department of Emergency Services. Ten-week leave of absence, returning on July twenty-eighth, or half return. Brittany Lebar from Domestic Relations. Two-week leave of absence, effective August third, with an expected return date of August ninth. Tyra Reel from the Lebanon County Correctional Facility. Eleven-day pay leave of absence, returned on July twenty-third.
Make a motion to approve the leaves of absence as read.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any question or comment? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
Under changes, status, transfers, and promotions. I have a motion to approve Chief Clerk of Voter Registration, Michael Anderson's request to reclassify the Deputy of Voter Registration position from a grade seven on the non-union salary chart to a grade nine on the non-union salary chart, effective August twenty-third.
I approve the motion.
I'll move it, but I'm not sure.
So we agree.
Will you agree?
During our personal session.
Okay, I thought, didn't remember agreeing. Okay.
If you have a problem with it, I'll make the motion.
Well, I said I'll make, that's all right, second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve the request of Michael Anderson.
May I just ask, was this a compromise to what was originally requested? Okay, that's what I wanted to find out. Thank you.
Any questions or comments regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
Kyle Boyer, Promotion from Operations Technician in the Department of Emergency Services to Assistant Systems Administrator at the rate of one thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty-two cents by weekly, effective August ninth. Allegra Ziede, Promotion from Secretary C/ Interpreter in the District Attorney's Office to Admin Assistant/ Interpreter at the rate of one thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars and nine cents by weekly, with fifty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents by weekly, Interpreter Pay, effective August ninth. Alexander Gedge, Promotion from Private First Class at the Jail to Lance Corporal at the Jail, to the rate of nineteen dollars and eleven cents per hour, with one dollar per hour Lance Corporal Pay, effective August eighth. So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve those changes. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so move.
Under other transactions, Present Judge Tilwalk would like to rehire Owen Hanna as a law clerk to Judge Charles Without the Bar at the rate of one thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and one cent by weekly, effective September thirteenth. And the jail would like to rehire Matthew Carney, Sr., as a full-time correctional officer at the rate of fifteen dollars and ninety-one cents per hour, effective August ninth. The jail would also like to hire the following two full-time correctional officers, all both at the rate of fifteen dollars and ninety-one cents per hour, both effective August ninth, and that is Robert Paul and Austina Stong. And the jail would like to hire Hannah McCurdy as a casual fortune correctional officer at the rate of fourteen dollars and forty-eight cents per hour, effective August ninth.
Make a motion to approve the hirings?
Second.
It's been duly moved and seconded. I think we have the hirings for those folks. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
Moving on to Salary Board. Motion to approve all transactions previously read, plus the following. I have a salary correction for Janelle Victor, the Director of the Renova Center, since she moved to thirty-seven point five hours, at the rate of two thousand five hundred and nine dollars and seventy-four cents by weekly, effective August eighth. And an incremental increase for Laura Scherk, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail, to the rate of seventeen dollars and sixty-five cents per hour, effective August twenty-second.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve those Salary Board transactions. Any question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
Hi.
Good morning.
Leanne Shank, Human Resources Assistant. Mister mandated conference seminars. I have Thomas Smith and Bailey Van Fleet from Children and Youth. Would like to attend the MDIT Orientation Training in Harrisburg, October seventh. October seventh, Mileage and Meals Reimbursement, five credits mandated by DHS. Crystal Beadman from District Attorney's Office would like to attend the Forty-Second Annual DUI Association Conference in Lancaster, October twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. Three hundred seventy-five dollars total registration fee with parking reimbursement. Ten credits mandated by P A DUI Association. Brianna Briaada, La Liberty, and Stuart Stillwell from D E S would like to attend the NIMs three hundred and NIMs four hundred in Mannheim, December thirteenth and seventeenth. Forty credits mandated by Pima. And Brianna La Liberty and Gary Burna from D E S would like to attend the following two trainings. Mitigation for Emergency Managers, online, September ninth and tenth. Four hundred dollars total registration fee, sixteen credits mandated by Pima. And Hazardous Weather and Flooding Preparedness in State College, September twenty-first and twenty-second. Lodging and Meals Reimbursement, sixteen credits mandated by Pima. Susan Shepler, Tariff and COVID. Mary Fry, Andrea Palfrey, along with Karen Hess and Stephanie Eck, with the understanding that Karen Hess and Stephanie Eck will be replaced by their successors once they are known. They have from Domestic Relations. They would like to attend the D R A P Fifty-Fourth Annual Training Conference in Seven Springs, October third through the seventh. One thousand five hundred dollars total registration fee with lodging, mileage, meals, parking, and tools reimbursement, mandated by B C S D. And Timothy Turasco, Turaski, and Stu Stacy Heward from Sheriff's Office would like to attend the TASER Instruction Recertification in Heisprer, August twenty-third. Seven hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents registration fee, Meals Reimbursement, mandated by Axon TASER Recertification.
I'd like to make the motion, but I'd like to add a stipulation that it depends on the CDC requirements, considering traveling at that time. I don't know that we want, I've just been following, I got caught up yesterday after getting back from the Commissioners Conference and found that the CDC is now recommending mask wearing. They may put some limits on travel, so if that's the case, I really think we should have that part of the motion that we can adjust.
Okay, lack of a second, the motion dies. My only comment to your question or your addition to the motion would be that we have Bob Dow directing us and we have the Department of Health at the state level. So, you know, to lock it into CDC is kind of, to me, restrictive and maybe, and I'm not speaking for lack of a second, but I'm assuming that that's part of the issue.
Well, I thought that our policy states that we should follow CDC recommendations.
Although we don't need the addition to your motion.
Well, but I don't want these people saying, thinking they can go, because we passed it, without stating it upfront, reinforcing it.
Then we have no second, so those folks cannot attend the motion with the leaves. If we go on to the non-mandated.
What?
We're doing, there's no.
Well, I can make a motion to approve these, as presented.
Okay. Second. Any comment beyond what we've discussed? So we will comply with whatever we agree to as far as the restrictions, but we don't need to add it to this motion, is what this motion is saying. Go ahead.
My only comment is that we would also be subject to whatever the provider is doing.
Yeah, yeah, the seminar, the host of the seminar is doing. So if there is restriction, then presumably they would.
So we have, the answer to this is, we have enough government agencies messing in our business. As a county commissioner, I don't want to begin to do that.
Well, I do have to comment on this. Our job is to keep people safe, especially our employees. And if they would go to another area and come back here and spread the disease within the courthouse to all the other employees, we're going to be short-staffed. I'm erring on the side of caution.
Any other comments regarding the motion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'm mandated.
My mandated conference seminars, Michelle Eders Snailey and Leanne Shank from Human Resources would like to attend the Twenty Twenty-One Sherf Annual Conference in Fairfield, September sixteenth and seventeenth, with lodging, mileage, meals, parking, and tools reimbursement.
Motion to approve.
And again, for the same reasons, I want you to be educated, but I'm going to know without stipulations on travel.
Is that a second?
Yes.
It's moved and seconded that we approve this non-mandated request of the H R Department. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Two to ones, split vote. Motion carries.
And Bradley Seifer from the Sheriff's Office would like to attend the Armored Force in Palmar, August tenth, two hundred fifty dollars total registration fee, no other reimbursement.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve the request of the Sheriff's Department. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries two to one split vote. And certainly, I want the safety of our employees to be forefront as well. So, but we, I feel we have enough things in place to assure us of that and not, don't need to amend motions and add things to motions to accomplish that. So, next. That's it.
Brief as promised presentation.
Who promised that?
Jamie and I negotiated.
He just wanted to be here.
Oh, he should be here.
He told me he doesn't even have to sit.
Yeah, that's the promise. He doesn't, so short he doesn't have to sit.
Are you waiving your right to sit?
Yes, I am.
Lisa, come on.
It's usually not this difficult to do a proclamation to thank somebody for their years of service to the county, but we did negotiate successfully to get Roman here, and that's the important thing.
Think we can get three votes for this.
I don't know. He's not wearing a mask, so I don't know. Anyway, we'll read the motion, have the proclamation, and see where it takes us.
Roman's retiring, but long ago asked for not having any fuss at all.
But we won't make much fuss.
Yeah, we're boring ourselves.
He just wants to quietly go. But there's an important job that Roman does with a very important agency in our organization, so nice to have him here. Whereas, Roman J. Sheahey began his career with the County of Lebanon, employed as Director of Renova Center on January fifth, two thousand and four. Whereas, during his tenure, Roman excelled at developing and maintaining relationships with the families of our residents at Renova. Whereas, Roman navigated challenges over the years, always with the best interest of the residents in mind. Whereas, on August seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, Roman will retire as Director. With seventeen years of distinguished service as a valuable and dedicated employee, and now therefore will be it resolved that we, the Commissioners of Lebanon County, on behalf of past boards of Commissioners, of past and present employees, and all our citizens unite to thank Roman for the outstanding leadership he provided during his many years of dedicated service. Further, we extend congratulations and best wishes for a most rewarding future and very best return.
Seek a motion.
I'll make a motion that we pass the proclamation for Roman Sheahey with extreme gratitude for your years of service. You're such a compassionate and caring man, and you were just right for that position, and we wish you all the best in retirement.
I'll second the motion. Roman, you already know how I feel.
Roman, thank you. Part of the discussion phase of this thing is that I also want to thank you for your strong leadership down at the Renova Center through a lot of ups and downs and challenging issues that face us every day in different ways. And your standing leadership has been a great asset, so thank you. I'm so glad you're able to retire and to enjoy your new phase of your life.
So I do have to.
You do?
How's that?
Sorry, we don't want to make a big fuss.
We don't have time for that, sorry. No, take your time.
I'm finding retirement an emotional event.
One always is.
As you are aware, Renova Center is home to twenty-one individuals with intellectual disabilities who require a lot of personal care and need in their specialties. And over the past seventeen-plus years, Renova has become my home away from home. And it's hard when it comes time to leave home as a staff and resident, which I hope as family members. Jamie, thanks for your kind words and thank you, Senator, for always having the time for me. And I want to individually thank Commissioner Ames, Commissioner Litt, and Commissioner Phillips for your faithful commitment and support to the Renova Center. I can't say goodbye because of the memories that are now a part of my life. So I'll just say, obviously.
Thank you, Roman. Lisa? All right, we'll, how about a vote? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved. Three, zero. Thank you, Roman. Thank you for accommodating us. We really felt that was important, for the history of the county, to have a proclamation in honor.
I did try, didn't I, Jamie?
He did try. If I'm still with you, okay.
Don't mind me, I'll present it to you.
We do a lot together.
Yeah.
You guys are great.
So who's getting the photo? Okay, okay, where are you gonna stand?
I will. Okay. Where's Roman? Lisa?
Yeah, Lisa.
Come on.
All right, here we go. One, two, three. Perfect. Good job. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, young man. Appreciate it.
Face does look familiar, I think. I've seen you somewhere.
We did.
Thank you.
All right. And that brings us right to Trump Rush, if you're ready.
There he is. Phone goes up.
Oh, that's what it costs.
Hello. Any other things?
Yeah, we're not, you know.
Okay, thank you. May discretion.
That's it. Thank you. May the minutes reflect.
Well, can you sit on that chair or stand? Okay, there you go.
Oh, that's good.
So, good morning and thank you for giving me some time. I know that I met a couple of you. Could I ask you? And handed you off a packet. I'm here to talk about a new property, Community Homes. Wishes developed in North Lebanon Township. I think all of you have probably been by our proof of concept structure on Maple Street, so you have kind of, in your minds, an idea of what the property would look like. This, or Community Homes would be the sponsor of the project, the developer, the owner, the manager. We are working closely with Lebanon County Christian Ministries, Lebanon Rescue Ministries, Calvary Chapel here in Lebanon. And just as a side note, we've been slowly, over the last couple of years, taking steps to get to this day. And yesterday, there was an actual closing on the land in North Lebanon Township. And that was generously provided by funds from Calvary Chapel in Lebanon. The property itself would be a total of twenty-three units. I'm not sure how much, and I don't know if you electronically read it. I've got four copies of this, which includes all the detail, the operating and the development pro forma. This is unique in that it is, to my knowledge, my first time in Lebanon County, and affordable housing property is being attempted to be developed, built, occupied, with totally, or in the majority, using private funding. Something new for Community Homes with this project, which we've never been noted for doing fundraising, because in the past, way back when, you know, there was lots of money available at the federal and state levels. That just doesn't exist anymore. And so, we're taking a slightly different approach to this. I trust that your technical people who asked me for this same information you have in front of you have reported to you as to their thoughts about the project. But the twenty-three unit project would be built out in three phases. The first phase, we'd like to complete by two thousand and twenty-two. We do have a Federal Home Loan Bank grant application that is due in their offices in Pittsburgh next week. But overall, some of the differences are that almost forty-four percent of the total funds required are going to be generated through grants from the Federal Home Loan Bank. Community Homes, in turn, is mounting a three-year capital campaign, which will generate another almost thirty-five percent of the total requirement. And permanent debt, and we do have a lender who has agreed to, who is a member of the Federal Home Loan Bank, has agreed to sponsor our project into the Federal Home Loan Bank system. Over the course of the three phases, their permanent debt would be about eleven and a quarter percent of the total need. I am here today specifically to ask you for your support via the monies in the Act One Thirty-seven Fund. When I sent the information over to Mr. Hoffman, I asked specifically for five hundred thousand dollars, and I subsequently, could you clarify, that's Brian Hoffman? Brian Hoffman, I'm sorry, what did I say?
You said Mr. Hoffman, but there are other Hoffmans involved in this.
Okay, Brian Hoffman, correct. And, yeah, with beers and Hoffman over there, Robert Hoffman, obviously.
He wouldn't give it to you.
No. So I'm specifically here to ask, ask for that. But this is unique, and from the standpoint of there's a tremendous amount of private sourcing of the funds to do this. And it's simply the reality that we don't have places to go with any credible chance of success, either at the federal or the state level, for funding of the project. The total project would be twenty-three units. They would all be handicapped accessible. There would be nine two-bedroom apartments, fourteen one-bedroom apartments. They will be a little bit bigger than the ones that are up on Maple Street that you can see now, and they will have an outside small storage closet. There will be an addition of a back porch, as well as the front porch. North Lebanon Township has committed to, or has approved, our conditional use application for developing this pocket neighborhood on the. for developing this pocket neighborhood on the parcel that we're talking about. So, rather than me blithering on... Oh, one thing I want to say. I mentioned Calvary Chapel, Lebanon Rescue Mission, and Lebanon County Christian Ministries. One of the things that we talked about way back was how can we create housing that would be supportive of people and would continue to help them become more self-sufficient, would help them economically better themselves, and even went so far as talking with the Habitat for Humanity about this particular property becoming a feeder to their first-time homebuyer program. My point simply is, there's plans to actually provide, it's not a part of the grant or any of the funding, but each of these organizations has agreed to provide what Federal Home Loan Bank calls empowerment assistance. Those are things like case management, counseling for mental and behavioral health, job employment training programs, life school classes, financial literacy, including budgeting, credit counseling, all to try to get them to, each household to become in a stronger position than when they first come in to canal affordable housing. But what I want to say...
Trump, I think something's missing in the equation for me. And it gave me some sticker shock when I looked at it, the cost per unit and also the overall cost of the project. I don't think that was mentioned.
It has not. Well, it gave all of us sticker shock. And part of it has been the wide volatility in construction materials cost. When we did an initial pro forma earlier this year, and then we updated it in July, we saw, for example, overall, the entire project, a 20% increase in construction material cost. That was 600,000, a little bit over $600,000 in increased cost. And the utilities, you know, tap-in fees to construct the, this is vacant grounds, and there are no utilities on the site, that is a pretty high number as well. And it is true. You know, we did the two units up on Maple Street, because we owned the land, had the utility, we did it for about $122,000 per dwelling. This is a little over $222,000 for dwelling. And the differences are raw land, no utilities, and the volatility in construction cost. So, you know, the last pro forma I mentioned earlier this year in the winter of July, we saw our costs jump by a million bucks, a little over a million dollars. Now, we will continue throughout this entire project to reevaluate that. We're going to do everything we can to drop that per-unit cost as this project rolls out. I hope I answered your question.
You didn't mention the 5.1 million yet, but maybe you could...
Well, the 5.1 million is the total cost for all 23 units.
Thank you. Anything else on your side that you want to present, or do you want to take questions?
I'll be happy to answer questions. I just want to make one more point. So, these three other nonprofits, Calvary Chapel, Lebanon Rescue Mission, and LCCM, I asked them the question, so overall, year to year, how many people in your various programs could use housing like this? And they each responded back to me, and they're telling me that their need today totals about 105 households a year. So, the supply of these 23 units is less than 22% of their total need. And that's just those three organizations, let alone what's happening in the community at large. So, anyway, I'll be happy to entertain questions.
My question also relates to cost, and we know that whatever the situation, change in administration, the pandemic, supply chain, all those kinds of things have contributed to ridiculous pricing in built construction materials. Plywood is high as $100 a sheet. Wouldn't it be prudent to wait this out and see where this, because indications are that that is becoming somewhat softened with new pricing? And, you know, I know it's hard, none of us have a crystal ball, but, you know, when you say that there's about 122 people that could use units like this, there's probably a lot more that could use a $222,000 home in the community, people that are living in much lesser means. So, you could certainly jack that number on if you consider the practicality of this project. It really is a concern to me to spend that kind of money, and I know it's coming from different sources, but it's exorbitant, really.
My view is that, first of all, I applaud your board for pulling these entities together. This is something that I think is, you know, very, well, worth mentioning, that it's rare when you get three competing in many ways for, you know, private funds, that they're working together to solve a problem. And I think putting a dent in it such as this is a good thing. I also am happy that they're taking, they're going to have skin in the game in terms of their own resources and also being responsible for raising the funds through capital campaigns, that you'll be left with a maybe 10% portion, or 11%, you said, I think, of debt at the end of this whole thing. So, when I, you know, distill it down to the whole thing, I'm going to support it because of all the entities involved and their commitment to making it work in spite of the cost, I'm very disappointed that, you know, these can't be done for $75,000 and you could have three times, you know, that's the practical or pragmatic side of this kind of project, that most people that are out there in the private sector would look at and say, you know, that would make sense if they could be... But I've preached that before with you, and I know it's, there are guidelines you must follow and so on, that we get to these numbers. And I also understand in your defense that the average for these is, you know, 270 a unit. Am I far off on that? That we're actually 50,000 below what the rest of the world's...
Yes, and you, you know, in this market, that's true. You can go over to Dalton County and you're approaching $400,000 a unit. If you go to Philadelphia, it's at another $100,000.
Okay? So, yeah, it's so, that's the bureaucracy that we're involved with, you know, in these things, so, yes.
When you...
I think I'm finished right now, but thank you. Oh, and the only other thing is, you came here for an ask, right?
Correct.
And we didn't get to that part yet.
He did.
Well, I mentioned it. I am asking for $500,000.
Okay. I didn't hear that.
There's one other thing, if I may, real quickly. I did not mention stormwater management. That certainly has impact, it will impact every project that's done in the future. And in the schematics that I believe you all saw, there's a total of six different stormwater management elements that we have to construct in order to get it. So, that doesn't help us out either. In terms of the need, and I'm going to try to answer Mr. Ames' question, two things. We are very aware of how many people need it there. We had a lady move into Willow Terrace this year. She lived on North Fifth Street. She was paying 80% of her income for rent. Her landlord, who was out of town, did not keep the property up to good shape. What was she faced with doing? Walking out of her apartment, going down the street a couple of blocks to go into a laundromat to toilet. And she'd been doing that for months. All right? Secondly, I would just say, because you all know Jim Castle, his widow called me last week, a lady's been on our waiting list at Popper Terrace for three years, and she was just checking in again. This lady's still number 26 on your waiting list. So, we'll do everything we can to drive that cost down. I mean, that was the whole Community Homes board thing. Can we do it economically so we can achieve affordable rents? I look at this with our development team on a weekly basis. We're doing the best we can. So, Mr. Ames, I want to say, yes, we could wait another year, but I don't think this issue of having decent housing for a lot of people is going to go away. I think it's going to get worse. I'm sorry to be the bearer of that kind of news.
My reason for wanting to move ahead is more trying to hold this group together, and it's been, this has been in play for a couple of years already. So, that's my other fear, that it's maybe getting fragile in terms of waiting another year might put some holes in the support that they think is out there for. So, there's a couple of those through my head, for sure, the permits.
We had a twice-in-one motion before. We don't want that again. At any rate, try and have a little levity. Charlie, I know you for many, many years, used to be on the board for Community Homes, and know that you are extremely frugal and that you're a man of your word, and you've laid out that you're going to work on getting these costs down. You're kind of giving us a ceiling at the height of the cost of the different building materials. And so, I heard what you said, and I know the county has very minimal risk in this. And the $500,000, it is my understanding, is a loan to you at no interest rate, and we will get that back to reinvest in a future project. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All that being said, I would like to place a motion on the floor to move ahead with approving the $500,000 payment, no interest, for Community Homes to proceed with this project.
Where are those funds to come from?
Act 137, please.
Oh, I was actually in motion.
Do you have a painful second? Yes, Jamie?
Just a couple of things to mention. You did touch on one of my, one of the notable things is the stormwater on-site. I think you're literally putting vaults in underneath to store the water, which is a practice these days. Is that how it's being done? Are there storage facilities, I guess, for stormwater?
Yes, there'd be one in the canal street connector, and then there'll be three located in the parking lot driveway areas. One is actually between Phase 1 and Phase 2, underground.
So, that is a pretty significant expense that at one time wasn't.
Yes.
Number two, the utilities, oddly, this, if you know where this site is, I find it odd, anyway, that the utilities have to still be brought to this site. It has industry on the south side and on the west side, residential on the east side, and a manufactured home park on the north side.
We're not taking that far away.
But here sits this vacant lot that's just never had utilities run to it. And so, that is, you know, and at some point, you know, it's going to be developed, and that has to happen, the utility. And the last thing, I just wanted to, you touched on it, but I don't know if the routing of the funds was discussed, and that's the $90,000 purchase from Calvary, or from, by Calvary from Habitat about 10 years ago, maybe more now, maybe 15 years ago now. The county granted from this same Act 137 funds, the purchase, the money to purchase that land by Habitat. They have held it for that long, and I think for some of the things I just talked about, they never materialized. So, Calvary purchased it for this project for $90,000. The proceeds of that sale are coming back into the Act 137 fund where they came from. And so, you know, it's a bit of an offsetting revenue here for this. It's the same money, you know, same project, but $90,000 from it coming back.
$410,000.
Fourteen. I hope that was, follow that. I just wanted to make mention, it's in the overview we have, and Trump mentioned the purchase, but the routing of those funds are bringing back in to be reused for the same.
Just off the top of your head, Charlie, what are the engineering fees for this project?
The next phase of the engineering fees for the stormwater management, utilities, all those things, I have a quote from Stechback for $35,000 to completely develop site development stormwater management plan that would be then set forth to the township and the county for review and approval, hopefully approval.
Have you had engineering fees up to this point?
Sure have.
Excuse me for laughing, but if you, the only thing more expensive than an attorney these days is an engineering company, so...
Yes, we received their bill on a monthly basis.
Could I maybe be a little more specific to your question, Commissioner Ames?
Sure.
The total fees, the professional fees that are coming into this cost, architect, engineering, attorney, accounting, and so on, is $840,000.
Just about $1,000,000.
So, that may be more complete answer. And then the site work itself, which we just talked about in terms of excavation, stormwater and so on, is $863,000. So, you have, you know, $1.7 million in fees and site work before one, you know, one brick is laid for the actual project, construction of the dudas.
All right. Just, Act 137 is what?
Affordable housing.
Okay.
And Jamie can explain where that money comes from? That's a perpetual fund.
There's a portion of each item recorded in the Recorder of Deeds office that gets parceled into an affordable housing fund for the commissioner's discretion to use toward affordable housing fund projects. I think that legislation passed in 1993, so it's been...
And for Charlie, so it's, you know, roughly a $5.1 million project.
Yes, ma'am.
44% coming from Federal Home Loan Bank grants. I'm no mathematician, but if I did it right, it looks like 2.856 million is what you have to raise?
1.8 million is what we will be raising through our capital campaign overall. A Federal Home Loan Bank is going to provide $2,250,000.
Oh, okay. And that 1.8 million is what, LCCM, Lebanon Rescue Mission, are they the ones?
No. Community Homes has its own capital campaign. It's chaired by Troy Peters from Jonestown Bank and Trust Company and David Warner from Buzzkin Davis. We've been very quietly getting this ready. We're now meeting every two weeks, but I can tell you thus far, I cannot name the source of it is, but our largest donation thus far is $125,000. We have right now, today, $205,000 in the bank, and they're actively working to close the rest of the gap we need to do Phase 1.
Got any questions before we vote? Not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sides, so moved.
Thank you.
Charlie? If you will be in touch.
All right. I've got six items here. I think seven was two. Presenting to you in relation to the 911 Department of Emergency Services Center, an agreement between the county and North Cornwall for final subdivision and land development improvements and financial security agreement, as well as a stormwater management, best management practices, operation and maintenance agreement for the property, and then we intend to build the center. This was approved by the supervisors on Tuesday evening, contingent on your signing of the agreement, executing the agreement. The financial security that the county will be putting up or representing is essentially our assurance that this is a bid project and that the bond, that the builders will be bonded and therefore held accountable for any of the work that's going to be done, and we will... And we will also, of course, name North Cornwall Township as additional insurer on our policy, which would give them additional security, and so they approved it under that arrangement. And the other is, these are standard agreements. Everyone who does a subdivision or land development in North Cornwall Township has the same agreement to execute. So the one thing I'll note is that in the agreement, if you noticed, it names this site as a 31.66 acre site. We're utilizing 10.3 acres of it, but it is not yet subdivided. And so once it, once the subdivision goes through, then we'll have the 10.3 that we're utilizing. But the property that they had to address at this point is the whole cryder parcel, 31.6 acres. The 10 is being subdivided. So I don't know if you took notes to that or not, but.
Are we building stormwater for the 30 acres or for the 10?
No, just for the 10.
Okay. I wanted to verify to make sure.
That's going to remain, you know, raw land or whatever he decides to do with it.
Thank you. I want to make sure.
So there's two separate agreements. I'd ask Kreiger to take two separate motions on it, but the first one being the final subdivision and land development improvements and financial security agreement for the parcel.
Make a motion to approve and design the agreement for the township.
Second motion.
It's removed and seconded, that we approve the subdivision. Comment or question? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
And then the second agreement is the stormwater management, best management practices, operation and maintenance agreement for the parcel.
I'll make a motion to approve the stormwater.
Second one, or what?
That's.
Second. It's removed and seconded, that we approve the stormwater management portion of this project. Any comment or question? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
So that gets us past the milestone of having an approved plan in place, and now we can settle on the property. So that was part of the sales agreement with Mr. Kreiger, that once we have an approved plan, that we have proceeded far enough to settle on the property, so we'll get that scheduled out.
He asked me last week how I was going.
Sure he did. I'm sure he did. I'm rehearsing this week, but we'll, we'll probably. All right. All right. Next, I have an agreement for, on behalf of children and youth, this is a child welfare information system data sharing agreement that requires the county's approval. It is a, we are part of a state child welfare database, and this agreement allows our agency to share Lebanon County's data to be added into this database among all other counties. Something that.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement.
And I'll second the motion.
It's removed and seconded, that we approve this data sharing agreement. Any comment or question? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
I have two hotel tax grant fund applications, first being from Jonestown Borough, submitted by Tom Kiefer, council member, and their request is for park trails within the George H. Kaufman Community Park in Jonestown Borough, and they attached to the applications and development plans and diagrams of what they intend to do. They are paving some remaining sections of trails that go around and through the Kaufman Community Park. They'll be removing the existing stone dust from the current trail, adding base, and then paving 540 square yards of pathway, and their goal is for the park to facilitate and promote a wide range of recreational opportunities for everyone. It also includes multiple ball fields, tennis, pickleball, basketball, and volleyball courts, pavilions, playground, van shell, concession, walking, biking trails. The benefactors include visitors for the region and state baseball tournaments hosted by the park, tourists from several local hotels, bets, and breakfasts, and visiting, and also those visiting area campgrounds. The project cost is $26,917, and they requesting $10,000 toward this project.
I'll make a motion to approve the Jonestown Borough request for $10,000 in hotel tax funds.
I'll second that motion.
It's removed and seconded, that we approve this hotel tax request. Any comment or question on the motion? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
Second one I have is from the Lebanon Valley Conservancy, and they intend to hold the Tower to Town 2022 run, which is from Clarence Shock Memorial Park in Mount Gretna to Optimist Park in Lebanon. Their total project cost is $10,000. They're requesting $2,500, and the funds would be used for advertisement of the Tower to Town 10-mile trail run, and it will proceed on the Lebanon Valley Railroad, and benefits the Wanger Park. So, plans, and I think you know a lot of that, since John's been a couple times more. So requesting $2,500 from the park.
I make a motion that we grant $2,500 to the Lebanon Conservancy for the motion of the Tower to Town run.
I'll second the motion.
It's removed and seconded, that we approve this motion. Any comment or question? Good track record with us, and they do give us good data as a follow-up, so they're a very credible group. There are no further questions. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
Next, I have two requests for exemption for real estate tax for disabled veterans, Norman Rice of Shore Landing Drive, Lebanon, Frank Gallagher from Lantern Drive, Lebanon.
I'll make a motion to approve the real estate tax exemptions for 100% disabled veterans.
Second the motion.
It's removed and seconded, that we approve those real estate tax exemptions or forgivenesses. Any comment or question? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
And lastly, I have a proclamation recognizing the Lebanon chapter of the National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution, who are celebrating their 125th anniversary on August 8th, 1896. So this is to honor that organization, or more specifically, the Lebanon chapter, which was chartered on August 8th, 1896.
I'll make a motion to agree to the proclamation for the Daughters of the American Revolution.
I'll second the motion for the proclamation.
It's removed and seconded, that we approve this proclamation from the DAR. Any additional comments or any questions? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved. Okay. The only thing I want to, before we close, is, you know, you see all the requests for hotel tax money, all these are in large part volunteers putting these things together. We just came off the week, or nine days of celebration for agriculture in our county, and you saw a legion of volunteers putting that on. So, you know, people coming out of this COVID, with all the issues surrounding that, I'm just very proud to be part of Lebanon County. It feels good to, when you see the involvement of our fellow citizens supporting each other, and that was just a very hard one to give the citizens, too, and for these folks that come back year after year with these kind of projects.
Just to follow up on that, listening to Laura this morning, we had news of this ahead of time, but this was a record-breaking fair as far as attendance and money raised, so it's certainly of such nature.
Yes.
And I think that there was room for questions because York County, which is much larger, moved their fair to the same time as the Lebanon area fair, and they struggled for numbers, and we exceeded and excelled, so congratulations to everyone again who put that fair together and volunteered to make it successful.
Actually, Cecil County in Northern Maryland had their fair the same week as well.
Oh, my!
Yeah, so I think it was, it'd be interesting to hear how they did in relation to other areas.
There was somebody else in Pennsylvania, a county fair, a local fair, in addition to York, in addition to us.
Yeah, I just think it really, agriculture is vital to our county, as we know it's probably 50% of our economy, but to have folks come from all walks of life to support it, it's just an incredible thing to, you know, to always.
People were tired of sitting home, but unfortunately, that Delta area is just creeping in here, and so I'm glad we got our fair in.
Well, all that being said, we have moved to adjourn. Yes?
Second.
We stayed adjourned. Thank you for your input and your attendance.